Oh, thank you, thank you. I want to hug right here.
He said that for two weeks.
I didn't miss this one. Oh, dang.
Order and welcome to everybody. It's good to see you, those of you I can see. Some of you are sitting behind the board. If you would, please remember to turn off or silence your electronic devices. And please stand and join us in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, as we gather here tonight, we remember all that we have to be grateful for. We thank you for our families and friends and the amazing city we call home. As we celebrate this holiday season, let us be mindful that this is a difficult time of year for many people. We ask you to bless those who struggle with financial difficulties or loneliness during the holidays. May they feel the warmth and support of our community. We ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight, and we thank you for the tremendous gift of freedom that we so often take for granted. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I'd just like to take a brief moment before we move on with the agenda. For those of you who may be watching at home, we have a few people here, too. It did strike me as I was preparing for tonight that there are many people who suffer through this time of year that we find enjoyable, most of us, but for some people, this is a very difficult time of year. And so in Temple Terrace, we try to look out for each other, we try to take care of each other. So if you are watching at home, or if you're here, if there is somebody that you know, you yourself, or somebody that you know struggles through this holiday season, we want you to know that we're there to lend you whatever support we can. And we would encourage you to have those folks call us. You can call me, call the clerk's office and ask, leave a message for me, and we will certainly do our best to try to make those folks, I don't know if we can make them whole, but try to help them through the difficult time of year, so. Okay, and for those of you who may not come frequently to council meetings, which hopefully are most of you, we have a new tradition here that we started a year or so ago, and that is that we begin each meeting with a fun or interesting fact about Temple Terrace or the surrounding area. And we pass that responsibility along so that everybody has an opportunity to do that. And tonight, it is Councilmember Gil Schistler's turn to present the fact.
Thank you. Could we do that? Can we take that down for a little while, because I can't see half of the staff. I apologize. Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, I would do a little bit of a different twist on it tonight, so as I slip into my TV mode, Dateline 1931. The sleepy new city of Temple Terrace nestled along the Hillsborough River was about to become the focal point for a local whodunit, also known as the Temple Terrace arson case. Let's set the stage for the intrigue. There were three apartment houses that were built on the corner of St. Andrews and Shadow Lane. These houses were built during the original boom of Temple Terrace, but there was no record of who their owners, who their occupants, well, of not all their occupants, or if they even enjoyed a brief period of prosperity. Sometime in 1929 or 1930, the buildings were purchased by a group of, by four men, Augustine Friscia, Marlo Perla, Peter Friscia, and a guy named Louis Puglisi. During this time, one of the apartments was inhabited, or was occupied by Mrs. J.L. Allgood, who also happened to be the second teacher at the Temple Terrace Elementary School. She and her, well, she and her husband lived there probably 1930 to 1931 timeframe. She got a phone call, a call one afternoon telling her to vacate the property immediately. She did. She and her husband got out of there, went to Tampa, moved into Tampa that very night. There was a gentleman, his name was Mr. A.M. Shantz, who lived at 312 Park Ridge at the time, and another individual, a friend of his named Cliff Robbins, who was owner of the telephone franchise in the area. I don't know how that worked. All I know is that they also received the warning of the plot. They broke into one of the houses, and they wanted to get the phones back before there was a problem. When they got into the house, they found that there was wrapping paper soaked in gasoline all around the furniture. Somehow, they were able to save one phone before they had to jump out the back window as the explosion engulfed the building in flames, and the entire structure went up. Now, back then, we had a police chief, his name was V.I. Clark, and he had two officers who both rode on bicycles. We had a fire chief, his name was A.E. Fisher, he had been appointed in 1928, but we didn't have a fire truck. So it seems that the, it's assumed that the fire department had to come all the way in from Sulfur Springs in order to extinguish the flames. That is still, the history is not that clear on that, but that was the assumption made. Problem was, we had very little law enforcement with which to investigate. It actually then boiled down to a federal offense. So the, to bring the bad guys to justice, 1938, excuse me, 1932, the government's main witness came forward. His name was Gus Perez, and he owned a furniture store in Ebor City. He testified that he had partially furnished six, the six apartments, at a total cost of $1,200, but had given the four owners, the names I had given before, a receipt that made the cost appear to be $10,400. The owners had heavily insured the furniture and the buildings just before the fire. This testimony resulted in the conviction of all the defendants on federal prison, went to federal prison on the charge of using the mails to defraud, not for the actual arson, but to defraud. So as a follow-up to the story, Peter Friscia and Louis Puglisi both were pardoned sometime in 1935 or 1936. Miss Allgood never moved back to Temple Terrace. She and her husband moved to Tampa and never lived here again, although she could continue to teach until about 1936. Now, the person who testified, Mr. Gus Perez, in July 25th, 1936, he wound up on the wrong end of a shotgun by an unknown assassin in one of Tampa's many unsolved shotgun murders in the 30s and 40s. And by the way, for those of you who are still wondering, and it drove me nuts trying to figure out where St. Andrews Place was, I guess it dealt with the, so the proximity to the golf course, it's now been changed to Sunnydale Drive, so, and now you know the rest of the story.
Thank you, Mr. Schistler. They changed the name of that road when they brought in the postal.
Was that what it was? Okay, okay.
The post office, yeah, they changed the name of a couple of roads because there were names, roads with the same name in Tampa already, so they had to change.
Makes sense. Drove me nuts trying to figure out where that was. I looked every map I could find, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Very good. Thank you very much. That was pretty good, huh? Not bad. A lot of work went into that. There's some interesting stuff that comes out every month. You think you know your city, and we try to outdo each other, is what it is. That one's going to be hard to outdo. That was a good one. Okay, next item is a presentation by our pedestrian, bicycle pedestrian advisory committee by the vice chair Candy Ashley. And so just to provide a little context for this, we formed this committee, council member, how long ago? A year, two years?
It was previous October, I think.
Okay, so we formed this committee some time ago and gave them the charge of developing a proposal for preferred bicycle and pedestrian paths throughout the city that would align with safe crossings on 56th Street or Fowler, and would take you from, through the parks, the library, to the rec center, and Lightfoot, and so forth. So we're now going to get a presentation of the outcome of that work, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, Vice Mayor Chambers, city council members, Temple Terrace residents. My slide's up. Oh, good. So I am a member of the, we call it the B-PAC, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and Mayor Ross has already told you what our charge is. It was to identify areas of interest throughout the city, create a pathway that connected them, and also to provide linkages to Fowler and to 56th Street. And so we tried to link to parks and community gardens, and I got to tell you, some of these photos that you'll see, I got from the internet, some of them I took, I didn't know we had so many parks. So I think it's great that we're going to connect all these with a bike path. So it'll go by our parks and our community gardens, it'll go by all of our schools that are in Temple Terrace, it'll also go by municipal buildings except for City Hall. Right? The linkages to Fowler are 53rd Street and River Hills, both sides of River Hills, and then the linkages to 56th Street, oh, this didn't turn out very well, but the linkages to 56th Street are White Way and Druid Hills north of Bullard, and then River Hills to the south of Bullard. So that's what we've got. Questions, comments?
Council, Councilmember Abel.
First of all, I would like to thank the B-PAC for working so hard on this. They really were very diligent. They spent a lot of time really poring over each of the areas of interest and trying to find a line to draw, to connect them all, that made the most sense and seemed like something that people were going to use. They also backed it up with some research, some heat maps from, provided by Julie Bond from Cutter. So there is definitely a lot of effort in here, and I believe that they would like to have some feedback from you all about what you like about it, maybe what you'd like to see that's different, and share your thoughts about it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Schistler.
Thank you, thank you Candy, for good presentation. I appreciate the effort, hard work. What is meant by the term linkage? What's that definitely going to be?
Just to link Temple Terrace to Fowler, and hopefully make an easier way to get to USF, and also get to the city of Tampa. So what we are hoping, and this is not exactly what you asked, but I'm going to tell you anyway, what we are hoping is that we will get feedback from y'all. We're planning to be at the pop-up event on this Saturday. We're going to get some feedback from some other Temple Terrace residents. After that, then we will talk to Florida DOT, and so that we can incorporate our pathway with some of their paths as well.
Well, I guess my question is, what do we need to do to accommodate the linkage? Or do we need to build structures, or paint the roads?
Well, and that's something that we've talked about. We would like to see the roads painted to help with that. We haven't really gotten quite that far yet.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
If this I may, I can address that a little bit. So I believe before we started this committee, Mayor Ross spoke with FDOT, and before the committee started to work on this, we need to figure out exactly what sort of help that they could provide. So they basically said, well, come up with something. If you come up with something, then we can talk about what we might be able to help you with. So this is sort of a proposal to share with them, to see what kind of synergy we can create.
The reason I ask is because, you know, the roads already intersect, okay? So it's just, you know, what ancillary construction, or what ancillary things need to have happen in order for the linkage to actually be beneficial, so they can move around safer and easier? That's all.
And I guess what I meant, or what the committee meant by linkages, was linking our bike path, not just the city of Temple Terrace, but linking our bike path with Fowler and with 56th Street.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So this, so this proposal, the multi-use paths, is what we are going to show to FDOT and ask for their assistance, maybe in creating some sort of traffic calming on Fowler, or some way for bicycles to safely navigate from 56th Street onto Fowler Avenue to get to USF?
The, I, not necessarily that route, not necessarily Fowler, or 56 to Fowler, because that's probably not the best route, but definitely provide a linkage to USF. We have, our bike path does go up 53rd Street to Fowler, and we're hoping that we can work with FDOT to get across Fowler.
Okay, so, and then I see on here, there's, there's a blue path that says Surtax, and it crosses over the river at Rotary Park. Is that something that's like a future plan?
Is it blue on here? Some of these paths are, the red one is our proposed path.
Okay.
The other ones are either FDOT or FDOT-proposed paths.
So, well, because right now, basically, the road ends, White Way ends at Rotary, at the park, right?
Right, right, right.
Oh, Railroad Park, sorry, not Rotary Park.
Right.
And, this is very small print. Yes, and that, so there is no current path over the river there?
Correct. That is correct.
So this would be a proposed expansion?
Correct. And again, this would not be us, this would be, I believe, FDOT. Yeah.
Yeah, I know that one.
Well, I know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things here, so.
That was the old.
It was the old rail.
Bike trail, and that was approved by FDOT or DOT many, many years ago, and probably still on their list, but it was never close to being done on our money. So I don't know if Brian has any new on it, but that's what that is. That's not part of what they are presenting.
So, yes, it's Brian McCarthy, city engineer. The Surtax areas were just to help the B-PAC kind of think about the entire city as a whole. So again, we would come back to city council if that was ever something that wanted to be pursued. It was just something that was in our records as a proposed path back when the Surtax was, I think, approved back in 2018, or 2019, whatever year that was. So it was just there to provide some reference or an idea if they wanted to expand further. So it's not what the B-PAC is proposing.
I've got a comment, not a question.
Go ahead.
Not about this, when this, that.
Oh, okay.
It's in general.
The only thing that I, there's a couple of things that I would say. First of all, thank you. This is exactly what we need as a framework to begin. I would encourage the committee to hold off on the FDOT component, though, at this point. Let staff take the lead on talking to FDOT.
Oh, absolutely.
There's probably 100 conversations we have going on with DOT right now, and this is just one of them. We met with them again this morning. There's a lot of moving parts with their plans along Fowler Avenue. There's six different projects probably along Fowler Avenue, and they're all programmed in a certain sequence. This is what we needed, though, to talk to them at the planning stages where they are in their Fowler Avenue planning, and 56th Street planning, though, to say, look, this is kind of what we want to do. And as far as the linkages, we're looking for safe crossings. And so for, and this is a totally moving target. For instance, there's some changes that have happened recently in their plans along Fowler Avenue that may include adding another signalized intersection between 56th and 50th, and it probably isn't going to be at 53rd, so that would probably need to move to align with the new signal.
Right.
And so that's why it's important that we speak with one voice to DOT, but this is what we needed. And also, we've talked to them very preliminarily about funding opportunities to pay for the paint to do this, and I think we have, they're very receptive to that. The blue trail, just to provide a little, a little light on that, the blue trail's still on our project lists at the TPO. We didn't remove it, it's still there. It's unfunded, it's not on the, that's the blue trail that goes, would involve a bridge, a pedestrian bridge over the river theoretically. It's still on our project list, we didn't remove it, but we also didn't fund it, and we haven't been pushing it. The property that that trail would need to traverse is on TECO property. TECO has since taken a different approach to their trails, and they're not as trail-friendly as they were. They just turned Hillsborough County down for a much more robust trail than this, so it's still on the list, but there's a lot of issues whether that will ever occur or not. So it's, right now, it's not hurting anything, it's a placeholder, and I think it's wise to leave it on the TP, on the tip list, because it's a placeholder. If we take it off and then something changes later on, we got to start the process all over again. So right now, it's just a blue line on a map, it's not hurting anybody, it's not costing anything, it's holding our spot, so. Looks great, any, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say, the routes that you've picked, your paths are very good, well-thought-out. It connects all the things I think we want to connect. Thank you for you and your committee, and our liaison to the committee, for a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very well done. Thank you, and Mr. Kravitz, thank you, and to all the committee members, thank you for all your work on this. Good. We needed this. This is a piece that we've been holding, that we've been needing, so this is great. Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our meeting on November 21st? And if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Is there any, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, the minutes are adopted. Persons wishing to, let me start over. Persons wishing to speak on items not on the agenda, or items on the consent agenda. If you would like to address the council, there are forms in the back of the room on the little table, and we are happy to hear from everybody. We do have a three-minute time limit, and we do ask speakers to begin with their name and city of residence. I currently have one request to speak, but there's still time. If you want to fill out a form and submit it to the city clerk, and right now, I have a request for Mr. Herbert Berkowitz. Good evening, sir.
I'd like to wish you all a good evening. Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. My name is Herb Berkowitz. I live at 6413 East 113th Avenue in Francis Arbor subdivision. I have lived with my family in, at that address for the last 35 years, and we've been residents of Temple Terrace for the last 45 years. Like most of our fellow citizens, I take great pride in how our city is maintained and how we have earned the name, the Tree City of USA. I'm compelled to tell, to come before you today because of the needless desecration and destruction of the trees in our city brought about by TECO's heavy-handed and misleading use of their power line easements that run along the backyards of 113th Avenue, and indeed cuts across my front yard and over the cluster of 10 live oak trees on 113th Avenue. You may be familiar with my property. This cluster of trees serves as a gateway to our neighborhood, and if you aren't familiar with this corner, please, I invite you to come by and see what I'm talking about. The TECO representative in charge of this project has told me directly that they intend to clear-cut all 10 of these healthy live oak trees that are on the easement. I'm not here to ask the council to take steps to stop this desecration. I know you have tried, and I know you've been stymied. However, I am asking have tried, and I know you've been stymied. However, I am asking you to exercise your position to make the residents affected by TECO's action and make them aware of their rights, and to advise them that they have the right to refuse to allow TECO to clear-cut and cut down these trees under the guise of this easement. I've practiced law in Hillsborough County for over 50 years. I'm a retired Hillsborough County judge, so I kind of know what I'm talking about. The TECO easement gives TECO the right of access to private property for the purpose of maintaining their equipment. It does not give TECO the right to clear-cut trees that do not impinge on this right to access. Let me be clear. TECO has always been able to access these lines on my property, and they have been free to trim the tops of these trees when they deemed it necessary, and I assume they have done the same with my neighbors' trees. But this time, it's different. What's going on is that the TECO is approaching each homeowner separately and with a heavy and intimidating hand, telling people that the TECO has a right to take these trees. If you may have another 10 seconds. Many of my neighbors have felt that they have no choice, and they have exceeded to these demands. I ask simply that you take the positive step of writing directly to the impacted residents and informing them of their right to refuse to allow TECO to cut down their trees. They need to know what their rights are before Temple Terrace becomes known as the City of Tree Stumps. I would tell you that I stand ready to assist in the writing of such a letter if the council so chooses. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz, and, and we will have somebody from our staff will be in contact with you.
Very good. There's actually legal action in process as we speak.
We will be in touch with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your time. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The consent agenda is adopted. Next is a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the code entitled Traffic and Vehicles, and our business relations manager, Greg Polly, is here to explain. Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz.
Well, good evening and happy holidays again. This is a ordinance amendment, Chapter 20, revising Article 1, Section 20-3, referenced locally in the code as the Temple Terrace Parking Ordinance. As you've heard from me in other discussions, we've been working behind the scenes for the last almost two years on the installation of a new electric vehicle charging facility in the redevelopment area. As part of the research that went into that, I did meet with our deputy city attorney and review our current parking ordinance, and we found a few things that we would like to bring to your attention and provide some revisions. With that being said, we found that the current, the city's current parking ordinance does not include a definition of electric vehicles, nor does it include a provision for the enforcement of parking spaces designated for electric vehicle charging only. The revision before you in this first reading will add the definition for electric vehicles, which also includes hybrid vehicles, and it adds a provision for the enforcement of parking spaces designated for electric vehicle charging only, and it provides for our local police officers to issue parking tickets commonly left upon a vehicle's windshield. Here's a, a look at the definition that is included in the revision. For the most part, this definition was inspired by the definition of electric vehicles published by the U.S. Department of Energy, with, with some very minor adjustments to suit our needs here locally. And after that, the, the current parking ordinance has, presently has 11 individual items that are regulated and enforced for no parking situations. And what this revision does is it adds an item number 12. So, reading it as in the revised text, "No person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle within any parking space or stall designated by signage and pavement markings for electric vehicle charging only unless the vehicle is capable of using the electric vehicle charging station and is actively using the charging station to recharge the electric vehicle. The electric vehicle must be removed from the designated space or stall within 30 minutes following the completion of the charging cycle." So what that does is it wraps in both enforcement opportunities as well as a new definition, and it allows our officers to issue tickets for violators in a traditional local, what you would call a windshield wiper ticket that would just be left on the vehicle. There is already provisions in state statute that allows officers to issue a uniform traffic citation for violations of this. However, the difference there being is that a uniform traffic citation is issued to an individual person and not to a vehicle. This allows our officers locally to simply put the ticket on the windshield, as with other commonly enforced parking violations. And with all that said, I would, I would ask that in preparation of the new electric vehicle charging station facility being installed in the redevelopment area, and to accommodate proper use of future electric vehicle charging sites, staff recommends approval on this first reading of the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Our parking hearing officer is here, Mr. Ritter. Any input on this? Okay. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
So my question is, is it not enough to have a parking ordinance that just delineates adhere to whatever signage is in front of a parking space, rather than expanding the ordinance to, because this, we're really only designating a specific space in, by adding this, but it doesn't really give us, because it's specific, if there are changes in the future, I don't know, a different type of vehicle, hydrogen vehicle, I, you know, then we'd have to come back and change the ordinance. So, is it possible to just have an ordinance where we say something more generic, like adhere to the signage?
In regards to the proposed language here, as I mentioned, it is heavily inspired by the state law. The difference being is that under a uniform traffic citation, under the state law, Chapter 366, it actually requires the officer to locate and identify the driver, who parked that vehicle there.
Well, I'm not suggesting necessarily that you change that structure. What I'm asking is, does the ordinance actually need to delineate specifically, don't park in an EV parking space if you're not an EV vehicle versus adhere to whatever the signage is, or we will, will issue you a citation?
That question may have to be fielded by our legal department, because I can only speak to what is traditionally in place now.
This is a relatively min, although the whole, a big section of the ordinance is listed here in this ordinance change, it's really two small changes. And without definitions, it gives a lot of way to, way for argument. So if the sign says, don't park here unless you're an EV vehicle, now the question comes, what's an EV vehicle? Here, we're actually adding a definition to say what it is. If we have hydrogen-powered vehicles, then, and they can plug in somewhere and get hydrogen, I don't know how it works, but we would probably add in another definition at some point that says, this is the definition of a hydrogen-powered vehicle.
I guess what I'm asking really is more about, we don't have a separate listing here for a, for a handicap site. So if you, so you can only park in this space if you have the handicap tag. And, but we don't list that here.
It is, it's probably in the rest of the ordinance. The thing is, this only went down to number 12. We added on number 12, but there are other, within the Florida statutes, it addresses handicap vehicle parking.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, is because you have a sign, you don't park there, or you get some sort of parking violation. I'm just saying, I'm just asking if this should be more generic versus being as detailed?
There is, there is, the disabled is in here already.
And it is under Florida statutes, so the statutes cover handicap parking. When you're cited for parking in a handicap space, you're not necessarily always cited for violating a city ordinance. You're cited then for violating a state law, so.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an opposition to this. I'm, I'm just with an eye to the future, saying, does it, did we need to delineate one specific type of vehicle?
Yes.
Yes, I think we do.
That was the question.
Councilmember.
Yes, are, who will establish the penalties?
The.
For the violation.
That would go through the traditional, it would become part of the parking ordinance. We're not creating a new ordinance. We're simply amending something that's already on the books, so it would go right in with the current process.
We'll have to go through and do this again at a future date?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Well, I mean, okay, you know, for the state statutes, I think it's $250 to park in a handicap. Are we going to establish what the penalty is for doing that?
It's, it's in the, it's in the ordinance now. This revision does not touch any of that. This revision only adds those two items. This proposed revision.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not creating a new ordinance.
No, no, I understand that.
We're simply adding to what's already on the book.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So, my, my question now is, with regard to parking fields, what, I, I understand we're only changing the, the verbiage to identify who can park in specific spaces. So my question is actually, who then takes a parking field and separates a number of spaces to be used for, I know handicap spaces come out of a certain count. Is there that same count for an EV parking space count for a parking field?
That is a very good question, and that is actually managed through our city planning and community development department. They also reviewed this project as well, and the significance or the change involved was deemed by the department to be not a significant change that would require additional site planning and so forth. So, to answer your question, the short answer is, community development oversees all of that.
City manager.
So, and Mr. Sherman's here, but I don't believe that the city's site plant regulations call, have a requirement for electric vehicles. Right, we don't. Some, there's some federal programs that will provide developers with certain tax credits if they put in electric vehicle charging stations. That's why you see them sometimes at hotels and things like that. But we don't require it. It may be something in the future, but currently, it doesn't exist for us.
It's coming. There, there is no current state, like handicaps, you have to have X number per parking lot. There is no state equivalent, but it's coming. We've had discussions at the TPO about that. I don't know when it's coming, but it'll, it'll, someday there will be, but there, there aren't any now. Councilmembers? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Polly. Ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 20 of the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances entitled Traffic and Vehicles by revising Article 1, Section 20-3, subsection 3, entitled Parking, to add the definition of electric vehicle and regulations regarding parking for electric vehicles for charging only, providing for the authority to codify, providing for separability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Good, thank you. Madam clerk, is there a motion?
I am moved to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the code titled Traffic and Vehicles Upon Frustrating.
Second. Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The ordinance is approved on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, December the 19th. Thank you very much. Mr. Polly? Next item is a resolution approving Hillsborough County's multi-jurisdictional program for public information as part of FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. Mr., our building official, Dallas Foss, is here to explain. Good evening, Mr. Foss.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The resolution is part of the FEMA program, which ties into the CRS and all that. It's the system for us to get information out to the residents of the community on anything with the flood issues or different things that come up, as well as providing letters to anyone that does lie within a special flood hazard area, which is in turn going to change and possibly increase our CRS rating. The county's already adopted, and part of that, we commend underneath with them for that, with the NFIP program.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Foss. So there are members of the public who wish to comment on this item. Okay, councilmember questions? Okay, very good. If it's acceptable, is there a motion to approve?
To approve the resolution of approving Hillsborough County's multi-jurisdictional program for public information on the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program CRS.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? All right. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Thank you, Mr. Foss. I know it took longer to read the title of it than, very good. Next item is a resolution adopting the National Institute of Safety, I'm sorry, resolution adopting the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework, and our IT director, Sally Cabrera, is here to explain. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Under Florida State Statute 282.3185, the Local Government Cybersecurity Act, municipalities with a population of 25,000 or more need, are required to adopt a cybersecurity standard by January 1st, 2024. And the city will be using these standards set by the National Institute of Standards and Technology, also known as NIST, the Cybersecurity Framework, as a guide for our cybersecurity standard. The city may further use any standards, guidelines, and best practices, providing all such policies are as stringent or more providing, provided by the NIST. The entire document for the Cybersecurity Framework is quite lengthy, and therefore, we included a quick start guide that basically covers what needs to be covered within our standards. And the document, if you really want to read it, is on the NIST website. So we're just asking for a resolution to adopt these standards.
Thank you, Mrs. Cabrera. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Councilmember questions? Councilmember Fernandez? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Schisler?
I'm going to assume that everything, we're, we're good with everything, with, with everything that's in here, and there's really no changes that you have to make internally or structurally?
Correct.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I just wanted to confirm, we are already, we already have procedures and standards in place to protect and preserve our technology and our data.
Yes, correct.
I have a question. So is this framework consistent with the efforts that we've been collaborating with CyberFlorida on?
Yes.
This is, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Good. Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution adopting the National Institute of Standards Technology Cybersecurity Framework.
Second.
Well, I'm not sure who got that one. Okay. Councilmember, we have a motion is second by Councilmember Fernandez. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Next is a resolution approving the subdivision agreement between the City of Temple Terrace Medical Offices, Medical Office Enterprises LLC and Citrus Assets LLC. Our city attorney, Pam Shishon, will explain.
I think it was decided that Mike Sherman will explain.
Oh, okay. Our community development director, Mike Sherman. Our community development director, Mike Sherman, is here to explain. That was a hot potato pass.
Okay. So Brian, I, oh, there it is. Thank you very much. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we're here to talk about the, a couple of things. Well, the VA medical, the VA plat, and then an agreement that we have worked with their app, with the applicant to maybe help them get open a little sooner than, than the code allows. So let me just start with the sign. Sorry, can I turn it on? Okay. So here's the site. At the northern part of the photo, you'll see Temple Terrace Highway, and the properties bounded in red are part of the subdivision plat that has been submitted for the city to consider. And here is a survey of the properties. So why are we here? Okay, so the office owner, which is the VA Medical Clinic, has submitted a subdivision plat to subdivide their parcels into two, into two parcels, the VA Medical Clinic and an out parcel. During the development review process, we realized that they needed to, the subdivision plat needed to be revised and add two additional parcels to that, and their properties adjoining parcels owned by Citrus Assets LLC. The VA Medical Clinic wants to begin seeing patients on December 6th, which is tomorrow. Our land development code does not allow us to issue a CO until a subdivision plat is recorded. And this agreement will allow the VA Medical Clinic and Citrus Assets to be part of a legal subdivision plat. The agreement will allow VA Medical Clinic to meet their target date of December 6th to be seeing patients. And how will this occur? Well, tonight, if the council approves the agreement, that's step one, and then all parties will sign it. And so this next section is language specifically out of the agreement. I'm going to read that. So if at the time of approval of the agreement, the city has certified that the VA Medical Clinic building is eligible to receive a revised TCO, which is a temporary certificate of occupancy, for everything other than recording that plat, the TCO will be issued. If at the time of, or that's the next bullet, is if at the time of the approved agreement, the city's not certified, the VA Medical Clinic building is eligible to receive a revised TCO for everything other than recording the plat, the revised TCO shall be issued once it's certified by our building official. And what happens if the approval of the agreement, after, excuse me, the approval of the agreement and the VA Medical Clinic opens, the signatories will record the subdivision plat no later than the 31st of March, 2024. And if it's not recorded, we're not going to issue them any more building permits until it is. The applicants have, are here tonight. They have representatives. They can answer any questions that y'all may have. The city attorney and their attorney worked diligently to get the VA, to get this agreement written, and we're excited to get the VA open. So if y'all have any questions, I'll try and answer them, or the applicants may be able to answer any questions y'all have.
Very good. Would the applicant like to add anything? Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, representing the applicant. So actually, our firm represents both property owners. So I think the, not knowing that we needed to plat, when we needed to plat, and the timing was just an oversight on our part. All of the parties are very willing to plat and comply with the subdivision requirements of the code, and the folks from the VA clinic are here if you have any questions for them. And also here to answer any questions if you have issues about the subdivision plat.
Thank you very much. Are there, oh, he's getting up to let you in. I thought he was coming to speak. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Are there questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, my, my question, I guess, is really for city manager and the city attorney, and that is, we, we have a situation right now in the city where a subdivision was platted, and then there were some changes to the plat, but they, but they weren't, I guess the new plat wasn't recorded. And then we approved, approved building permits and a CO on property that was built on the agreed but not recorded plat. And I just want to make sure that, because now it's a really big issue with those homeowners because their properties, for those of them that are built on an easement, that the easement that existed in the original plat are now, so they're built over that easement on the recorded plat, but the city had agreed to accept a lesser plat. I just don't want to be in a situation where we have a similar problem.
I, I know what situation you're talking about, and they are going to need, this other community is going to need, this HOA is going to need to fix the issues with their plat.
Right.
What is happening here is these folks are trying to fix the issues that they suddenly ran into, and we have a written agreement, and the purpose of the agreement was to make sure that they did that. Because the question that I had for all of this when I was first told about the problem is, all right, why do we require the, the plat to be recorded prior to a CO being issued? The answer that I got was, if you give somebody a CO, they're happy, they go along, and the plat probably never gets recorded. So that's why we have a written agreement, which they were very cooperative with and willing to sign, not just the VA, but the other property owner as well, because they know that they're going forward to develop, and that will, they want to have all their ducks in a row, certainly, so that they don't run into this little problem. They'll be all set. So that's why we had the agreements, you know, basically to help them out in, in opening up and serving their patients in the time that they had planned to, and also for the city's sake, that we make sure that that plat does get recorded. What happened back with this other community is different than this. They, they tried to make a change to their plat, and from what I can tell, it really didn't, was not done properly. So now they're going to have to do it properly.
Okay, I just, that might only, I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that will cause a problem down the road, that we're.
No, we're, we're trying to fix all their potential problems now, so.
That's it.
I have a very simple question. Mike, is the building ready?
Yes, sir. Speaking with our, our building official, the building's ready to go. I'll be out first thing tomorrow morning inspecting the site.
Excellent. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Other question? Don't go too far. Other questions, councilmembers?
Uh-oh.
Mr. Sherman, I just have a question. I think the plating is a fairly straightforward process, but just hypothetically, I mean, I don't anticipate any trouble. This has been a very well-run project. What potentially happens, though, if they give a TCO, they're open for business, there's hundreds of people that are relying on this facility, and then somehow we get sideways with the plat? And we say, no, we don't like that plat. We're not going to approve that. It doesn't conform to something. What hap, first of all, how likely is that? I mean, is that like 1% chance or 30%?
We're not going to bring y'all a subdivision plat to consider until it's right and everybody agrees on it. And I can tell you, it will happen in time for that March 24th date, I believe, to be met. This agreement will allow us to move forward, and there's a penalty in that if they don't comply, and that's, we're not issuing any more building permits until the subdivision plat is recorded if they meet.
But how likely is it that they're going to want to do something you don't like, and then it's back and forth? I mean, is that, we haven't had any issues with this project, so, okay. That, that's all I want to know. Okay. All right, very good. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution for the subdivision agreement between City Temple Terrace Medical Office Enterprises LLC and Citrus Assets LLC.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The resolution is adopted. And I'd just like to say congratulations on your opening tomorrow. This has been a great project so far. I mean, it looks beautiful. I think this is going to be a big benefit to a lot of people, and we're very happy to have you in our city. So thank you for, I know it's been a long road for you guys, so thank you very much. Okay, carryover council business or board reports? Well, carryover council business. Any old business? Any new business or board reports?
I do.
Yes, councilman, vice mayor, I'm sorry, vice mayor.
It's okay, for a little bit longer. I attended the Hillsborough County Arts Council quarterly meeting this morning, and I talked to them about our art project, the art funding project that we're, we're trying to do. I've also met with the Temple Terrace Arts Council, which is not hard because I'm the president, but we, we informed them of that, of this project. We announced it at the Arts Festival to all the artists. We're getting email lists of artists. I'm going to talk about it at this Thursday's Centennial Group, even though they're, they're not part of that. They are doing some art stuff for their projects. So that's in the works, and I just wanted to report that to everybody.
Very good. Thank you. Exciting news. Any other new business board reports? Just have one real quick item, and I alluded to this earlier when we had our B-PAC presentation. So a lot of these transportation projects are moving targets. As soon as you think you have this all nailed down, it, it moves, right? And now you don't have it nailed down anymore. And so at some point in the future, hopefully the not-too-distant future, the city manager or city engineer perhaps will be bringing some amendments back to the council for approval. The design of the crosswalk at the library is likely to change a little bit. It's not wholesale changes, but it is likely to change somewhat. We've met with the county, we've met with DOT. I, I think you'll, I don't know what you'll think, but I think, I think the proposed revisions are a positive. I think it's a good thing. But keep in mind with the fire department annex that we're putting on the fire station there is factored in, the median cut there is factored in a little bit. I think the proposals will be good, but I don't want you to think that, I don't want you to catch wind, oh, it's going to be different, it's going to be, and you don't, don't know what's going on. So I don't know at what point that will come back, but I think it'll come back at some point. Yes?
Semi-related question.
Sure.
Okay. During the, during Candy's presentation, the B-PAC presentation, a comment was made about the railroad park portion, bridge, whatever, of the tip. Is that our tip or is it the county's tip?
That's the, that's the.
Because I think we pulled that out of our tip.
No, it's.
I don't, I don't know that it means anything, but I think we.
Yeah, no, it's, it's still on, it's, the tip is complicated. Everything in transportation is complicated. There's three tables in the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan. Table one are projects that are funded and shovel-ready. Those are things that are happening. Table two are stuff that is moving up but is still in need of funding. Table three is stuff that is waiting to get on table two. We have kept this, that blue trail, the bridge, the trail is on table three. It's sitting there. Nobody's trying to move it up to table two because we're not pushing for that because, truthfully, right now, as of today, TICO wouldn't let us build it anyway.
I just don't want a bunch of.
Well, we could build a bridge, and we'd build a bridge the other side of the river, and you wouldn't be able to go anywhere anyway, so. And there's questions about whether, I mean, you know how many approvals you need to get to build a bridge over the river? I mean, that's a lot of stuff.
We'd get the next 48 hours on that?
Right. So the blue line is really, at this point, nothing we need to worry about. And that would not move forward without action by this council. I don't, your staff, me, at the TPO, I don't advocate for stuff unless the council has empowered me to do that. So don't worry, I'm not going to try to slip something by and without the council approving that, so.
I just wanted to clarify what tip that was on, because it's.
It's on our, the county, yeah, the TPO tip.
Okay.
Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first thing, I would like to thank everyone for coming out to Winter Wonderland this past weekend. The parade, the golf cart parade, I think we had many more golf carts at sea, and they were, there was incredible competition for first, second, and third prizes for Derek Green, the golf cart, that was great. The event itself was wonderful. The drone show, we had a little hiccup, but it was free. So, you know, it's one of those things, you kind of take what you pay for. But it turned out to be pretty, pretty, pretty good from what people saw when it, when it finally got up. A lot of staff time was involved, a lot of volunteers and staff time. So I want to thank everybody, sort of universal thank you to, to all the different departments that participated to make it a success. And thank you for the council support as well and for being there. The, the second item I have this evening, and the final item, is we have a new member of our communications team. So at the last meeting, we introduced our new marketing communications officer, Mr. Duarte, and this time, we have a new marketing and communications assistant. It's Mary Bates. Would you?
Sure.
Have her come up to the podium, just introduce herself.
She's plushy, on the spot.
All right, hello, everyone. I had the pleasure of meeting a few of you, but to everyone else, it's very nice to meet you. My name is Mary Bates, and as mentioned, I am the new communications and marketing assistant here. It is my second day, so far so good. Basically, I was born and raised here in Temple Terrace, and I went to school at USF, so I'm pretty familiar with the area, and I'm also very passionate about it. But yes, I'll be working closely with Mr. Joel and behind the scenes, Mr. Brian, and I have a whole lot of ideas, and I cannot wait to learn from all of you and try my best to make an impact.
Welcome.
Welcome. We're very happy to have you here and, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And in fact, she says she has ideas. She does, definitely has ideas, so we're embarking on, we're still going, 12 days at Temple Terrace, and actually it was Mary's idea. So first day, she's making an impact already, so we're looking forward to great things.
Thank you.
Good. That's all I have.
I have.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So in the CRA meeting, we discussed the demolition of the old Steak and Ale and the Curry Bowl building, but I'm thinking that a lot of people probably didn't watch the CRA meeting, and there have been a lot of questions on social media. So can, can you just give a short recap of what will be happening to that building?
Sure. So the, the property that the council member is speaking of, near the corner of River Hills and 56, the old Curry Bowl or Steak and Ale, is slated for demolition. We have a demolition contractor that is progressing. We anticipate that that property will be demolished before the end of the calendar year, so before January 1st, hopefully, barring any unforeseen circumstances. They will be doing a wet demolition because there is, they have found through their assessment process, some asbestos in the roofing materials, so they're basically going to spray it down. The structure itself, the debris will be removed and taken to a certified site for processing, and then that property will be scraped and basically left as is. The pavement will remain, but the sign will come down as well as the building.
I just have one more.
Councilmember Fernandez?
And it's about being a tree city. So I know this has come up many, many times, and I've broached it before in the past. I understand that Tampa Electric needs to have access to the power lines, and obviously, when there's a storm, people want their power lines to remain intact. However, the tree trimming does seem to be often excessive, and it's come up a lot with, the discussion has happened a lot in the past. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do to ask Tampa Electric to be a little less zealous with their trimming and, you know, just a little more balanced. You know, if it's something that city council members need to call and request this as well? I don't know. I just know it, it has been a problem because a lot of times, trees are scalped bare when that's not really necessary to remain, to retain the integrity of the power line and the access.
So this is an issue that's not isolated. It's at Temple Terrace. It's all over the country. Anytime you have an electric utility with overhead lines, they typically hire a large contracting company to come through. Aspland is a company that did a lot of work all around the US. And they will go through, and they've got a lot of volume that they, they take care of. So yeah, it's not done in the way that our city forces would do in terms of tree maintenance. We can look at that. I understand what Mr. Berkowitz was recommending this evening. It's something we're going to have to look at. I can't really answer directly to his, his, what his request was, but. I can't really answer directly to his, what his request was, but we'll look at that, we'll look at our options and see what we can, and we can report back to the council.
That's it.
City attorney?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Any other business? If not, we will be adjourned.